This with the flag, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had a chance to read over the minutes?
Yes.
Any comments, additions, extractions?
I make a motion that they be approved as written.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Take the meeting out of order.
Yeah, thanks.
Date of next meeting?
Okay, I think it's the 6th something.
October 6th, correct. Do you want to interrupt our regular business so we can do our presentation?
I'll make a motion that we take Agenda Item 8A out of order.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristi Chadwick. I'm from the Massachusetts Library System. I'm one of the consultants who works across the state. And George invited me to come talk to you about strategic planning, or long-range planning. You can use the two terms interchangeably in regards to us. So what I do, along with a couple of colleagues, is that we are here kind of as an advisory and also some facilitation assistance for libraries in Massachusetts who want to do a strategic plan. These plans are not required by the state. However, they definitely do help if you are interested in pursuing any type of the state grants, the LSTA grants from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. They do require you to have a plan for those or for their construction grants. So that's one of the main reasons that libraries do them. But we also like to talk about some of the benefits of them otherwise because obviously, many of our libraries do like to do additional fundraising. And with a plan, what it allows you to do is figure out the priorities that you have for the next three to five years. And you are able to kind of take a look and give yourself an idea of what you actually want to work towards for the future. So those plans will help you do that. So even if you are not pursuing state funding, there are additional ways to pursue individual grants or other foundations that you can use a plan to help you with that, too. And it's a really good tool with working with the community because you are getting input from your town in regards to what they think the library is for them and what they are hoping to see in the future. And you also get a better idea of what the community itself is looking for, too. So it kind of answers the question of where does the library fit in the community? In many cases, you definitely can, you know, you already know that. A lot of you are seeing people every day, whether in the library or in the community. And you hear from them about what they have for expectations, not only for the library, but for every other organization in town. And you see the families, and you see the schools, and you see everybody else. And we want to make sure that the library stays integral. We want to make sure that everybody knows about it and everybody knows that it's a place for them. So what we have here, if we can get the light, this first website I am showing you, this is the Board of Library Commissioners. So this is the other side, this is the other main organization that works within the state. They are the ones who actually provide all of the funding lines from the legislature, so they run that. So your state aid comes from the Board of Library Commissioners. My organization, the Mass Library System, we are basically a nonprofit that is funded by the state. But we do additional services such as your delivery, we do a Commonwealth ebook collection, and then my team works with consulting and training for library staff members across the state. And this is one of the things that I kind of focus on throughout the year is strategic planning. So if you take a look at what plans are, if you have ever participated in a business or another organization doing some type of long-range or strategic plan, there's no major differences. It's just kind of what answers you're trying to get from them. Because getting the community input is really the biggest focus of your plan because you want that information from them. Because making a plan is not done in a bubble. It would be very easy to kind of have the Board of Trustees and the library director and input from staff and others just to kind of bang it out, basically. But then you don't hear from the community. You don't know what the community wants. And so the structure that MBLC requires for the plans ensures that you have had at least some type of community input and outreach for them. So on the MBLC website, they have a whole page with additional links about how to do planning. And one of the biggest things that is necessary to know is really about the parts of a plan. A plan can really take any form. We have had plans that are one page. We've had plans that are maybe close to 100 pages. It really just depends on the amount of information that you want to put into it. And a lot of times, if you have all your supporting documents with it, too, that's how it gets big. But when you're trying to communicate it to your municipality and to your stakeholders, which is another important part of it that we'll talk about at the end, usually less is more. So the requirements for the actual pieces of a plan that are required are starting with a mission statement or vision statement. In most cases, pretty much every library that I know of does have a mission statement. It could be that mission statement has been around for several decades, if not longer. So some libraries also put in a vision statement so that they can kind of look towards the future. And sometimes, when you're doing a plan, this is when you kind of take a look at your mission statement and see if it really does still apply to what you are doing for services for the community. You're not required to have both. If you have both, that's great. But as long as you have one of them, that is fine also. The user needs assessment that they indicate this is really where you are going out into the community and getting that information. And that can be done many different ways. A lot of libraries start with a survey. And usually, it is the easiest tool to work with because you can get it out to a large amount of people, you can ask different kinds of questions. And a lot of times, gathering that information and getting it put together can be done through a program. There are many different ways to develop surveys. And a lot of times, that whole process is automated enough where you don't have to go in and actually try to do any changes and do any of the data manipulation yourself. But there are other ways that you can do that also that may take more work. But it is that user needs assessment and gathering that information, whether it's through surveys, through having open community discussions, maybe one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders in the community, finding people that maybe you haven't talked to before about the library. Once you get all that information together, you start seeing some themes about what, you know, people think about the library, you know? And some of that is going to be positive and some of it, maybe some of the problems or challenges that they may have. And whether or not those problems or challenges actually exist, what we find a lot of times is that it is people's past experiences with libraries that keeps them away from an organization. You know, if you go into something when you were five years old and the person who was behind the counter treated you horribly, it can throw, you know, it can throw that sort of you for the rest of your life. And there are definitely people who have taken that turn. So you gather all of that information. You're going to hear from a lot of people who loved the library. And it's easy to gather information from them. It's harder to gather it from non-users, but there's definitely ways to kind of get out into the community a little bit more and try to get that information. But it's going to show you not only things that you already know are priorities for your library, but maybe some interesting things that you haven't thought of before. Not everything that you're going to discover during the process is going to be something you're going to be able to do over the next three to five years. It may not even be something that you have ever considered doing at all. And that's okay. This is really just information gathering. It's finding out what your community needs. And maybe the library is not going to be the entity that can provide that. But maybe you can be, have some indirect impact on it. And maybe you can start a conversation with a group or with others in the community to kind of help that along, too. So that's why the user needs assessment is really kind of one of the big focuses of it. Other pieces that they ask for are your goals, which are obviously, these are the priorities and themes that you find kind of rise to the top. Some of it's going to come from the information. Some of it is going to come from staff and trustees and your director and other people who are here every day and know kind of what some of those priorities are. So it's not all going to be just from inside the library. And it's not going to be just what the community needs. It'll be a blend of both. And it'll be taking a look at, you know, your capacity as an organization and what you're hoping to do over the next few years, too. Part of the goals also comes with creating action plans. And the MBLC does require a yearly action plan. So those are just basically some of the actual tangible things that you are expecting to do within the scope of a fiscal year to go towards meeting your goals. The description of planning methodology, that's basically, this is how we did this process. We had a few, we had meetings, we had a committee, we talked to, we hired a consultant, we worked with the Massachusetts Library System, we went out into the community, we, you know, we put this whole package together. The Board of Trustees approved it, you know? And that is really kind of what you're looking at for a timeline. And then governing body approval, which of course is you. It is required to be presented and approved by the Board of Trustees. If you are planning to want to apply for the next LSTA grant round, you'll see a lot of times a reference to October 1st as a deadline. That is only if you are planning to apply for that next grant round. So if you were already through this process and sending in your plan prior to October 1st of this year, you would be ready to apply for the next grant round. But if you're not planning on doing that, you don't have a firm deadline. You just have to send it in when you want to. And the truth is, you don't have to send it in at all if you are not planning on pursuing any type of state funding because your state aid doesn't require this. So that is a choice that, you know, you as the governing body and your library director and staff would make those decisions on. So those are really the big pieces of the plan. And then I also did refer to an action plan, which is linked on this also. And basically, that, they actually give you a template for it, which is you tell what goals you're going to work on that year. You're going to list the actions that you're planning on pursuing. And you submit it and file it to them by December 1st for the next fiscal year. So it's kind of strange because you're dealing with fiscal years in December and October. But that's federal funding versus state funding versus how a municipality will operate. Yes?
I have a question. I just, we are the trustees. And since I've been on the board, the trustees are the ones who have done this. You seem to indicate that somebody else can be doing this.
There are many different ways that this can be pursued. A lot of times, what you find is that, you know, obviously, you all have experience within the community. But if it is just you working on it, you need to have, obviously, that outside information. If you are gathering that information, then the actual write-up and how that is processed can be done however you best feel it needs to be done. Some libraries have their director and a couple staff members working on it. And they keep in contact with the trustees until it needs to be approved. Sometimes, the trustees will form a subcommittee. So it'll just be a couple of trustees. And then they'll also bring in community members to actually create a planning committee who all work on that. And that planning committee can either just be operational, where they're the ones who are creating the survey questions and conducting interviews or making sure all the survey information comes in and helping to draft pieces of it. Or your committee can also operate basically as a subgroup or a focus group so that if you have someone who does some brainstorming exercises with your planning committee, you can have different people from the community come in and do that and be a focus group to kind of represent, be representational of your community. Although that's not the only people you would want to talk to in this. But it really is up to the library how they do it. One of the things that happens that if it's just the trustees working on it, obviously, if you have a quorum, you are under open meeting law. That means that any type of planning subcommittee or group would have to, you know, be running under that. Which many libraries do that. Even if their subcommittee is meeting, they have it run under open meeting law. Also, they create agendas and all of that. But if you only have one or two people and you have other people from the community doing it, depending on what your town rules are and depending on the library, because obviously, we don't just have town municipal libraries, we do have independent libraries in the state. So the rules can vary depending on the type of library. But if you are a town department, then you would kind of consider what the town wants you to do for this. And just judging from what I'm seeing right now, since you're on community access and all of that, usually you are running as a town department. So, you know, those are different ways that you could do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Paulie, were you thinking along the lines of like consultant or something to help?
No, it's just that the trustees have always done it themselves. And I wasn't aware that other people could. And outside ideas are usually beneficial.
Yes, I agree.
You know, this would be other than a survey.
That's the way we set up the committee to search for the librarian is we incorporated the board members with members of the community. And I thought it worked pretty well.
You did a wonderful job.
Oh, Carol, please.
Well, geez, I didn't mean that.
I'm going to take it that way anyways.
And they found the right person.
So as I said, even though MBLC is the governing body and they're the ones who put the official stamp of approval on it, it is within MLS, our organization, that actually does what I would say a lot of the like work. Myself and another consultant, Michelle Everly, we tend to be the two people who do a lot of the strategic planning assistance across the state. So we do have a particular page on our website that has a lot of information. We usually have done classes in the spring to kind of talk about the process, let people, let other library and trustees get together. The truth is, is that we haven't done that the last couple of years because there's nothing really new within the process. There have been different ways and methodologies that you can go about it. But the essence of how you actually create your plan really has not changed here in Massachusetts. So that's why a lot of the information is available on our site now. And I know it's a little hard to see on here, but what we do have is that we have a lot of the state information here with dates and templates. We have all of the workshop handouts that we have done over the last few years here. So we talk about a particular meeting model process that you can use. It's not the only one. But because it's only three official meetings for a committee, a lot of libraries like to use that because finding people who can all meet together in a schedule can be difficult. Although I will say that now that a lot of libraries have incorporated virtual meetings also, so whether they're doing it completely virtual or as a hybrid, has actually made it easier for libraries to actually have meetings of people. And this is not just for the committee. We have done like community forums. They haven't been huge. They've kind of been more like large focus groups, maybe up to 20 to 30 people at a time. But we have been able to do brainstorming exercises with that. And as I keep saying, we, at MLS, we do provide different services, obviously. I'm here talking to you about it. So basically, on our consulting side, myself or Michelle are, I don't want to say available 24/7, but anytime during the process that you have questions or you want to kind of have a sounding board for ideas or things that you want to do, we are available for that. So we can do that whether it's on the phone or a virtual meeting or by email. We do also provide limited facilitation services, which means that one of us could come to the library in person. It is limited in scope to usually just one particular day where we could actually facilitate and lead any type of meeting, whether it's a committee meeting, this kind of informational meeting, or a community forum where you want someone to kind of record and got and gather information from the public. But that's all up for discussion so that we can do that sort of process, too. And there are independent consultants that are available who can do this or possibly the whole entire process for you. But that does cost money. So that really kind of depends on what your library has in regards to funding for this process or if you don't have funds at all. And kind of finding different ways to have those meetings, have someone guide them. And then obviously, you can always talk to us about how you do that and whatever type of resources and materials that we could provide for you. Within this set also, we do have resources and examples. We have different plans that are listed on here in the second tab. So we have some sample strategic plans from libraries across the state. And we do list them by population to show that it doesn't matter what size community you have, you can still do a plan. And also, we have sample survey information and examples from other libraries, too, with some of their survey information. Plus, I will say, we always like to talk that this is a public document. So once the process has concluded, it is something you want to make available to your community, whether you put it on your website or have copies in the library or anything else. Because the public has been involved in the entire process. So you want to show them that it is not something that you've done and then stuck in a drawer for the next five years until it's time to do it again. You want to show that, you know, their participation has been really important and that you're honoring that commitment by, you know, showing them the document and supporting it, too. So that's really all I have to show you here. So I'm happy to answer any other questions or thoughts that you have in regards to planning at this point.
Wow.
A lot to observe.
It is a lot to, it is a lot to observe and to absorb. But it sounds like you have done it before. And the truth is, is that what you have done has been totally fine. We're just here to show you that you don't have to do it by yourself. And that you definitely don't want to do it by yourself because you're just one piece of really what affects the library and how it fits into Westport here. So you want to make sure that you have as many voices that can contribute as possible. And you may find out some information that you really wouldn't have thought of yourself because you are hearing from somebody else. Even if it's not always, you know, it may not be the most positive. They may talk about challenges or issues. But it could just give you new avenues for new ideas.
The last time we did this, we conducted a survey. And it was a written survey. And two people did the totaling, the tallying of all the questions. We had just completed an addition to the building. And there were so many written comments, positive written comments, that it was a feel-good experience.
Absolutely.
And it was really the first time that we actually, it was like talking to these people. And that was very, very nice. But I, I think the idea of reaching out to people in the community is just a wonderful idea.
Yeah, definitely. And what you find is that, you know, you put that initial survey out and you get that information in because that gives you a really good basis and you get to ask those kind of questions. But then you can either think of, who are the people that we actually really want to hear from? You know, is there someone in town government? Is there someone in a particular civic organization? Do you feel like you never hear from the schools or anything else? If there are particular people, those are people you want to kind of personally invite to have a conversation. If you can personally invite them to fill out the survey, that's great. But sometimes, they just want a little bit more of a personal touch. And that can easily be done by either inviting them to a focus group to ask kind of more in-depth questions or having someone who has like, it doesn't even have to be a really in-depth. It could be two or three questions that you want to ask them specifically because their view is important to this process.
What are some of the ways to reach out to non-users of the library?
Usually, that starts with kind of figuring out where your non-users are. Because a lot of that is, it could be location. Is there a part of town that doesn't seem to be easily accessed or has easy access to the library? Is it a certain group of demographics? Whether it's, you know, you don't see a lot of teens or you don't see a lot of seniors or anything like that. And knowing if there are other groups in town who do work with them, you can work, you can try to collaborate and maybe, you know, ask specific questions or go in during one of their meetings and really kind of talk to them about it. Some things that I've seen committees do is that they were doing theirs during, during an election time. So they got permission to set up a table outside of one of the polling places at the distance. And people who were coming in, they said, "Do you use the library?" If you do, they give them these five questions. If they didn't, they had another five questions to ask them. And they don't have to even be really different, but it'll give you some different perspectives on that sort of information. And really, it is just communication. So finding those communication roles, you know? We had, you know, knowing where people go, "Do you have a laundromat that everybody goes to?" We've had libraries who will put physical copies of their survey or put the URL on a slip of paper, you know, up there because when you're doing your laundry, all you're doing... because when you're doing your laundry, all you're doing is reading everything on their community board. So you have a flyer up there with that and they end up doing their survey while they're waiting for their laundry to be done. And it may be a group of people that doesn't normally use the library because of whatever situations or circumstances they use.
And those are anonymous?
They can be anonymous. Sometimes it's found that if you offer any type of incentive, that could also increase the amount of surveys you get back. In that case, you would ask for, you know, certain identifying information, usually a name and an email address or something like that. But that would be up to them to opt into it.
One thing we did done was have age group. What age you're in, what age group you're in and male or female. And that was interesting.
I will say that actually demographic information is not as important anymore. Especially because, you know, sometimes it's because it's not a binary issue anymore or it's just because you're trying to serve everybody. So, you know, whether, a lot of times the age of audience is important, especially if you're trying to target services, but not necessarily gender or anything like that is always important. Although finding out if they live in town or they live out of town is sometimes a unique perspective that you can get from people. Because you may have a lot of out-of-town residents who come in or you may have a lot of residents who use another library for whatever reason. And gathering that sort of information is important.
And that's one of the things, here in sales, we just did a big realignment of the library register. So we basically went to a hard seven-year cutoff. So we just had our total registered patron count drop by about 2,000 in a month. So now it's kind of like, okay, so we've got about 5,100 registered patrons and we're in a 16,000 person town. So there's 10,000 people kicking around. And we got to figure out why they don't have library cards.
Yeah, or why they don't have your library card.
Yeah. I'd like to think it's just no library cards at all, but.
Yes, but yeah, that, that can definitely happen. So being able to kind of, being able to pull, have that certain information available and look at what comes in from your actual community, finding ways to compare the two. Going back to what you said about surveys and input and stuff, there, as I said, there are definitely programs now, Survey Monkey, Google Forms, where a lot of people do opt to just put it in online, which helps with that information gathering. Although usually you do want to have a print version available, which means you're going to want a couple of people who will do some data entry for you. And that sort of stuff is kind of important. But depending on what program you use, a lot of times you can get the visual statistics, which can go into different reports, which may be important to not only the community, but other stakeholders too.
And I've used Google Forms before. In Plymouth, we used it for summer reading tracking and some of the, you know, different graphs and things that pops out. It's easy and very good.
They've definitely gotten better.
At the time we did the last survey, I believe the trustees were not so technologic, so technologically savvy. And we, because that was suggested, but we didn't know how to do that.
Well, it's one of those, Google's put a lot of money into making their services as user-friendly as possible. So it's a lot better than it used to be. And that was, you know, it's, it's a very clean, easy-to-use interface nowadays.
And then especially, you know, the cost ratio compared to something that's paid, which may give you some more collection and survey analysis and other things, but it may be at a cost as opposed to load to no cost. So that really all comes from, you know, the decision of how you are going to pursue the actual plan.
And plus here in sales, we already pay for the full Google suite. So it's basically using something we're already paying for anyways. Which is, that's a good thing.
Good to have you around, George.
You may have to show us that.
It's, it's, it's fun. It's good. It's good. But thank you so much for coming, Kristi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And definitely George knows how to get hold of me. So if you have other questions, please do let me know. And then once you decide to start the process, if you have questions or need any sort of assistance, then we can definitely help you with that too.
Thank you very much. That's good. Thank you for your help.
Absolutely.
Motion to bring us back into regular order?
So moved.
Correspondence. I believe that's you doing it.
Yes, sir. So in your packets, we have one fun piece of correspondence I wanted to share with you just to get an idea. This was sent to us from the Sales Library Network. It's called Value of Services, FY 2020. This was a report that the Sales Library Network put together just to kind of show basically what we get for our sales membership and for, excuse me.
Okay, that could be interesting.
So basically what we pay every year to sales is about between $17,000 and $2,200, depending on how you cut the apple. Some of that is optional. Some of it is optional, but I would not, I don't consider it optional personally, such as the money that we pay in for Overdrive or Libby. I think our library patrons would riot if we tried to get rid of that because it is a very highly-used service. Yes, sir. That is.
Do we have the correspondence? No.
Well, that, that's this.
Oh, okay.
So they sent this to me and I'm sending, giving it to you just so you can see it. Here we go. Yep. Thank you. So that's what we pay totally. And then there's a little bit extra on top of that.
That's not broken up separately?
No. So that's everything together. If you look at digital content borrowed, that's the number of digital items we checked out in the course of the year. So what we paid for that last year was $1,200. So out of $1,200 we paid, we got $260,355 worth of content.
Who's your 1,200?
That, it's not on this one, but that's, if you look. Yeah, I'm sorry.
George, do we pay for this all at once?
So basically we already paid all of this. We had three bills in July that basically covers all of this.
That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
You pay one, one month for the whole?
For the whole year. Yep. So basically what they do is they get all the numbers together and then they give us an assessment. And then they have a formula for how they break that down by size of the population of the town and yada, yada. It fluctuates year by year due to how much money sales gets from Boston to offset the difference. But generally speaking, it's usually between $19,000 and $22,000, $22,000 a year total. But out of that $19,000 to $22,000 we pay, we get approximately $367,742 of value back between all the different services that sales offers and the Overdrive eBooks and all of that. It's a pretty good deal.
Titles borrowed, is that the books that's ordered through sales?
Those are the digital books that are ordered through sales. Yep.
What about just titles? Above digital?
Titles borrowed. That's. Yeah, I think that's how many books we get from other libraries in the sales network. So they also facilitate the books going back and forth between the different libraries as well as the cataloging that goes between us. We don't pay for a full cataloger. We do not have a professional cataloger on staff here doing what's referred to as copy cataloging. We have people who do kind of like really easy, basic stuff just into the computer. And then there's somebody at sales who does the high-end stuff on the backside. So they make up for the difference in our staffing.
So the books we borrow come delivered in that van?
Yep. That's through MLS. The lady was just here. She is part of the organization that runs that. And then sales kind of does the cataloging to facilitate the books being able to be sent back and forth in the computer. So MLS kind of handles the physical transfer. Yep. And then sales kind of takes care of the close-to-us aspect of the digital side.
So the little Optima van that goes around every day is MLS?
It's a, well, they're a private company that holds the contract for MLS. Yep.
Is there a way to present this in a simpler fashion for the town when we're letting them know?
Yep. They also have a, like a brochure. That's a very, very simplified version, but this they sent out, so I wanted to pass it on to all of you. It is a little confusing. I apologize for that. I didn't do this one. Basically they assign dollar values to the different services. How much money, if you, we had to purchase it ourselves, it would cost. There's also a bunch of stuff that we purchase as a consortium through sales. That by itself actually saves us the money that we pay almost every year to sales. I was really surprised, when we get to later in the meeting, we're talking about our digital services, one of the services that we added last year was the Canopy Video Streaming Service, which we get a 15% discount on because we are a part of sales. And there were so many libraries in sales that went into that service together. We actually maximized the discount that we could get. And according to the Canopy rep, we are the only library network in the country that maxed it out and got the full discount in the entire country, which absolutely blew my mind. But it was pretty cool. But basically the over-under is, last year for 1907, we got about $368,000 worth of stuff.
Wow. Yeah. Couldn't this be a tool that we could use trying to extract money from the town?
We could. And it's one of those things that I definitely have talked to Jim about. And as of right now, the town only covers $11,000 of that 1907. So we're working on trying to get that increased.
Because, you know, the, it's impressive to see figures like this. So they know that the money we're putting in is being well-valued. Maybe they would dip a little into this.
I hope so.
Type of, you know, thing. I, I just was.
The town pays about 11?
The town does pay 11. And then the rest of it comes from either state aid or, I think I used, some of it was state aid, some of it was, I used the LASH money, which covers technology to cover the Overdrive assessment this year.
Because, you know, it would give us another leg to try and use because they're not very receptive to anything you have to say.
That's what we're going to work on.
Yep. Got to keep ClickMent away at that one.
Well, we got them to pay personnel, so now we'll work on.
Yeah.
Director's report. Is that next?
It is, indeed. Have to apologize, on the data side of the director's report, it is a little thin this month. Fortunately, this early into the next month, sales doesn't have a lot of their reports out yet. So some of the numbers I don't have. But I'll make sure to email that out as soon as I get them in to you all. The one thing that I was really surprised by, we got the, most of the digital checkout numbers early. And as of right now, before we get any of the print circulation numbers in and before we get the out-of-town eBook numbers in, we're already sitting at 2,000 checkouts in August just by the digital books themselves. So I'm really excited to see what the, the full number is going to be. I have to give Amy a shout-out. She's officially cracked 600 Facebook likes on our Facebook page. So we've, I think when I started, we were around 420 or somewhere around thereabouts. And now we're up.
Putting some extra effort into that.
Yep. Yep. We've been having her focus as her particular project on the social media side of things as well as adding the Instagram and the TikTok pages. So we're really happy to see that.
There's something almost every day.
Yes. Yes. At least, there typically is at least one post a day. And I think I was telling Dawn, I was, had a laughing fit because there was a woman who came in and Amy's been doing these videos where going through the boxes of the books as they come in. And we had one library patron who literally watched the entire video and paused it and wrote down each book that was in the box as she was going through the box and put every single book in the box on hold as she was watching the video. And she came in and she told us and I was just like absolutely floored. So that was really cool. It was good. So it's great, I know it's great for her to really see that, you know. Sometimes you can do a Facebook post or something on the internet and you just throw it out there and you can't see, you know, on the backside where it goes or if somebody comes in. But when you do find out, it has been helping people find stuff in the library. It's a great feeling. One thing that I will note a little bit later in the written part of the report and the narrative, we had a big meeting room spike from last month to this month, from 29 to 35. The main reason for that is because we've had a lot of people coming to the library and using the meeting room spaces for Zoom interviews. We had one person come in to do an online test and just trying to make it easier to facilitate.
Did they reach out for this ahead of time?
They did. We had one that was a drop-in, which we were able to accommodate as well. But we're trying to make it easier for individual people to use the meeting room spaces for that because it's a need. A lot of folks used to go to Dunkin' Donuts and use that meeting room that they had there, but it's harder to use nowadays and some of them have not opened back up due to COVID. And so it's definitely something that we hope to continue to offer going forward because it is making a difference for folk.
And benefiting the community?
And benefiting the community. I'd like, well, I'd like to think so. I think for some, it actually might be a detriment to the community because, you know, these are people who are interviewing for jobs away. But, you know, we want to try and still help as much as we can.
Do you have to be a member of the library?
No. So we consider that a general use of the library. So anybody.
Do you have to be a town resident?
No.
And these are people who can't do it from home?
Correct. Yep. Some folk, it's, you know, depending what part of town they're in, they don't have a good enough interconnect connection at the house.
They probably have five kids that.
Or it could be that too.
Well, internet use in town, I mean, the cable is not the greatest.
Yeah.
Now you do have high-speed here now, right?
Partially. Partially. Yeah. So.
Town's been putting high-speed in all the town buildings.
So Dawn told me about it because I didn't hear about it ahead of time.
I stopped, the police blocked the road off going to the elementary school. I do a daily ride and asked them what was going on. They were putting high-speed to the schools.
Yeah. So I ran a speed test afterwards. And so basically here at the library, we have two computer networks. There's the library line, which is, we get that internet connection through the Sales Library Network at a discounted rate, which is high-speed internet, quote unquote, which meets the federal definition of high-speed internet. And then we have the two computers and the Wi-Fi, which are on the town line. The federal definition of high-speed internet is 200 megabits download speed, 15 megabits upload speed. The Sales Library Network connection meets that definition. It's fantastic. It's a lot better than what I had in Wareham. It's really cool. But then after Dawn mentioned that to me, I tested our two town line computers. And it was after we had closed and I was here by myself. And this was good because I started swearing. Because the line on the town side, so the library line is 200 down, 15 up, right? The town computer, when I ran the speed test, was 285 up and 200 up, which was just absolutely insane. So the, in the federal guideline is 15 up to be high-speed internet. The town's line was 200. Just, I've, I've never seen an upload speed that fast.
It's good for the library with multiple users and everything.
But that's just on the two staff computers and the Wi-Fi. So the Wi-Fi is great because of that and those two staff computers are great. But without us rewiring the entire library's computer system, there's no way to get all the other computers onto that line too, which I have no idea how much money that would cost. At some point, we could look at it if we want to. There are some libraries in different towns that are moving over to having all of their computers on the town line just because of that reason.
We should have, at least know what it costs.
But that's one of those things, like we literally would have to, you know, physically rewire the library. So it would be the technology, it would be having to, and we probably would have to have a company come in to do it because that's something that I don't think Keith could do by himself.
It's not really that expensive. You've got open ceilings here. You run everything through the ceiling. You pull the wires.
Yeah. Which, the way that this library is laid out, that will make it cheaper if we wanted to.
I think we should get an estimate for what it would cost so we know what we're dealing with.
Do we need a motion for that? I make the motion.
I mean, we've got a long list of other projects I've got to work on.
You could have a committee and put somebody else to do it.
We could.
Add it to the list.
Oh, jeez. Okay.
Well, at least we're interested in moving us forward.
No, no, that's good. It's a good thing. It's fine.
I'm just trying to put more in your plate.
No, no, no. I understand. I appreciate that.
Makes it easier for you.
Yeah.
I know you don't have the final figures for circulation, but do you have an approximation? I know you don't have the final figures for circulation, but do you have an approximation?
The only number I have so far is that 2,000 number that we have for digital books. Other than that, I know last month, we had...
Eight?
Well, last month, the 8,000 was the total. So I think it was somewhere around 6,200 physical books last month, and then it was about 1,500, 1,800 digital. So if that holds the same, then we're probably looking at around at least 8,500, I think. But we'll have to wait and see. I don't know. August is a really weird month because it's a bumper month. You have the, you know, people wrapping up their summers, people starting to get ready to go back to school, programming starting to slide back down. So it's kind of all over the place a little bit. For example, last, last week was starting to slow back down. And then randomly, two, on Tuesday, we had a like 220-person day in terms of the front door, where normally we'd have maybe like 100, 150, you know. So it was just, and there was no other programming.
Especially Tuesday.
And that was the thing, there was no programming, there was no big meeting groups. It was just this random fluke, super-busy day that everybody just came to the library. So August is really kind of all over the place like that.
Interesting.
One of the really other interesting things was, so we've taken the three oldest, or the three newest, but the three slowest computers out of circulation for the public computers. And last month, with those three computers out, we still saw an additional, about 40 extra uses of the computers and an extra, about 25 hours of computer use with three less computers being there. So it was interesting, the people were using the computers that were working more and not getting frustrated and giving up and just leaving. So...
Yeah, good.
It was cool to see. Unfortunately, and good for Linda, she's great, you know, taking her time off. I don't have some of her programming numbers, so that's why a lot of this is kind of blank. And when she gets back, I'll get that together and have her send a report out to everybody on the second month of the summer reading program. But I know that one program, the Toe Jam, they had about 150 again at the summer ramp-up.
I think it was a little bit higher.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because I counted three times.
It's a number I was...
She kept changing the requirements. She said, "Go count the kids." So I counted the kids. I didn't count the little toddlers. She said, "Oh, no, you have to count them." So I had to add them in. Then I had to go count the adults because then she wanted the adult count too. So I believe the number is higher than that.
Just count everyone.
That was lesson learned. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't break it out. With the numbers I turned in to Boston are program attendees. They don't ask about age. So that's, yeah.
That's what she said. Just count them all. I did.
It's okay. Although I will note, so in terms of programming, there is going to be a pirate concert tomorrow night at 6:00 on the back lawn, if anyone's interested in coming. It's being billed as for kids of all ages. So I know the first set, first half of the program is supposed to be geared towards younger kids. And then the second half is going to be more traditional sea shanties, whether or not, there's still kids like that or not, if they want to head out. And then just the folks who enjoy such stay, it's up to the attendees. R. It was an pirate joke. R. No, no. Moving on. And then we're going to be having a science magic show. I think it's the first Friday or Saturday in October. I don't remember that date off the top of my head, but we have it at the front desk posted. In terms of the staff, Bonnie, Linda, and Amy utilized some of their vacation time as the summer season wound up in the month. And we are starting to plan on me taking a month off once the new baby shows up and just trying to work through that with the staff of who will take care of what. Right now, the plan is I'll be out for four weeks, but I will still be coming in to do the bills and anything else that needs to pop up. I'm not, you know, we're just one town over, so technically two towns over.
No, that won't affect your salary, will it?
No. So the plan right now is basically, I'll be using the six days of vacation time that I have and sick leave for the rest of it. So it should be okay, as far as I know, as of right now.
Okay, yeah, right.
We'll see. It depends on whether or not...
The shifting sands.
I'm gonna double-check my math because it was, I was calculating whether or not I'd have enough sick time to do it. Because Westport doesn't have parental leave as a thing. And I just want to double-check my math one more time, but it should, it should work out. So I just gotta make sure I take care of all the paperwork and stuff for it. Developments?
Well, before you go forward, we have to give a shout-out to Robin in Archaeology Magazine.
Yes, that's true, yeah. So if anybody hasn't read it yet, Robin and her research on the wreck down in the Gulf of Mexico was actually a featured story in the, this month's issue of the Archaeology Magazine, which we now have, I think, like eight copies of here at the library.
That's fantastic.
So make sure you check it out. We are photocopying it in case people don't want to sit and read the entire magazine here at the library. They also ran a whole article on Paul Cuffey in the same issue to go along with the issue on the shipwreck, article on the shipwreck. So it's really cool. We currently have two copies that are going to be permanently saved in the archive, as well as additional copies of the story itself from the pages. And then we have four copies that are going to be circulating to the public. So...
And I understand Laura brought them in.
How could I not?
And that was what I was gonna say next, that certain people want to be reimbursed for the cost of those magazines.
Not at all.
But yeah, that's, it's really exciting to see how that story is still filtering out and, you know...
And she was so excited to show me the magazine the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, before you leave.
The amount of work she did on that article and proofreading it and everything, it's really, you know, I think it's heartening to her to see something so tangible come out of, you know, the work in the history room. So it's really, it's been great.
Well, that's over at the Westport Library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
It's true. Yeah, and the really cool, for me, the coolest part of the entire story is part of the reason that Jim Delgado, the marine archaeologist, originally contacted us to begin with is because he was looking for different places and research avenues. And his wife, who's a retired librarian, told him to call the library. So... I love that. His wife kind of like, was like, "Why don't you call the library?" He goes, "Well, that's a good idea." So it's like a librarian on both sides of the story. They're everywhere. I love it. Our Irish report for FY23 has officially been turned in. I got it in early and I was super-duper happy about it after I turned it in early. Thanks to Dawn for coming over and signing it. Jump at the wall like a jackrabbit. And it was a hoot because four days after we turned ours in, the system crashed. But ours got in. So there's a bunch, like, literally, the majority of towns in Massachusetts have not submitted theirs yet. And they had to delay it twice because the system crashed and they haven't been able to fix it.
I know. I saw that.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of towns that are doing it by hand.
Oh, my God.
And I've been laughing as all the emails go out telling me, "Don, that's okay. Calm down." It's like, "I already did it."
We already did ours.
We already did ours. It's signed in, it's turned in. We good. If something bad happens, I printed it out and I have a hard copy of it. So if we need to, you know, we can scan it to them if they need it. So, ha-ha, but I did it. The downside to that is the second report that we have to turn in, which is our financial report, I almost had it in a full month early and then the system crashed. So that one, it wasn't completed yet, so we have to just wait and see how that goes. Hopefully, I won't have to redo it. I would be very, very sad. But we have all the information for it anyway, so it wouldn't be the end of the world. We've started implementing changes to the library's website slowly. So far, the homepage has been cleaned up, new, a brand-new museum page. Museum pass page has been added for the first time. We've removed the Friends newsletter because it was just no real reason for it to be there now that the Friends have their own website. And we've added several new services and links to our digital resources and research page.
Did there were linked to the Friends?
Yes, yes. There are several. I've also promised the Friends that when I get the image carousel set up on the homepage of the website, that they will have one image that will link straight to their website from the front page too, which will be fine once I get it set up.
I had to ask George where the site was for sales because I couldn't find it, the link. He showed me where it was. I didn't look it. I kept looking every place. I had to come over and ask him.
So when you do web design, there's this principle called the visual triangle. And they've done studies on this. And when you hit a website, your eyes automatically go straight ahead and then down, then up, then over to where you started. And if you don't have something in that triangle...
You miss it.
You miss it. And where the library catalog is on the page to go over to sales is right outside the triangle. So it's one of those things, like, I can't fix it that without completely redoing the entire website and making sure Dawn's computer is the exact right-sized screen.
I got it now.
But it's, it's one of those things like, that I learned at library school when they, when we're talking about the web design and everything. Simmons has this really impressive web lab that they do, you know, they have doctoral students and programs there. And they actually have computers set up with eye trackers. So if you design a website, they have people come in and actually look at websites that people are designing. And they can actually see where their eyes go on the page to like figure out how to catch eyes and pull in one way or the other one. It's really, it's a whole science. They also did a whole thing on color, but we're not going to talk about that right now. And then we already talked about the meeting room space. This was the month when stuff broke. First, we were dealing with the rubber floor peeling up and us having to try and address that. Then the front automatic door just died. It was repaired, but we are going to need to call someone within probably the next month or so. You could probably wait longer, but basically, what's happening is one of the doors is slightly mishung. So every time someone uses the automatic door, there's tension pulling against it, which caused the fuse to blow and the motor to burn out. The motor was fine, but it was like the, basically, the fuse and the tension on it caused the...
It blew the fuse before the motor?
Well, it wasn't the motor, it was the motherboard. So it was like a whole thing. So the repair guy who came replaced the fuse on the door, and then the second we hit the button, the fuse blew again because it was the board. So it was like a whole thing. In the course of that interaction, we came to find out that the company who manufactured that door closer is no longer in business.
Who does that service?
That's...
Does Railco do that?
I forget the name of it. It's the company that initially did them. We might be going with a different service because it's, the call-out fee was a little too high for me. But I forget the name of the company. It's on the sticker on the door.
Usually gotta, usually have to use door people.
Yeah. So we're gonna be calling somebody out to readjust the other one because basically, just with that tension, it'll blow again eventually.
Which one is the merge, the push button, the left or the right? Do they both do it?
If you're coming into the library, it's the left door.
I figured, because the left one always overhangs a little bit.
Yeah, and that's the thing.
If they could switch it to the other door, it'd be a lot better.
Probably.
Should we wait?
I mean, the longer we wait, it'll, no, this is a short answer.
So why would, why would we?
We're not going to. It's just one of those things with everything else that I've been working on. We haven't had time. I have the name of the gentleman we need to call. It was kind of a, it was funny for me because the repair guy told me a name to call of a gentleman in New Bedford. And Roland said the exact same name without me telling him what the repair guy said. So he's like the guy for door, door hanging and such. It was like Guido or something like that. I don't know.
Guido?
No, literally, it was like something like, are you serious? But yeah, I looked it up on the website. That's literally his name.
Anybody want to make a motion that George proceed with looking into the cost of the doors?
I'll make a motion that...
No in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There was that. And then the really fun one was the new printer died.
Oh, yeah.
So, which I was super-duper happy about considering all we went through to get that. So after about eight hours, maybe about two hours of me trying to fix it myself, and then about six hours on the phone with HP, we got them to honor the warranty because it was still under warranty. And they are sending us a new one. But I will probably never buy another HP again after this.
I agree. I've had miserable experiences with them and I'm so glad you got them to honor the warranty.
It was a lot of work, a lot of phone calls. I lost count of the number of times I was disconnected. It was north of nine, over three days on the phone playing tag with them.
Did you have to go out and walk it all?
I did. I have to say, I was also really surprised, but growing up, I was never taught Portuguese as a child. We were considered to have been fully assimilated into America and that was left behind. It was the, in the course of one of the phone calls, one of the times I got disconnected is the first time in my life I said, "Isa Juju," "Isa Juju," without stuttering or getting caught on the word. It just flowed from my heart as an expression of need.
What does that mean?
It's, "Oh, Jesus, help me." It's kind of like a prayer in Portuguese.
I didn't realize it wasn't a swear or something.
Nope, nope, nope.
Yeah, just try.
It can be used as a swear. The way that I used it was not a swear, it was a plea and call for help. Point of the story, though, is they're sending us a new printer.
Good job.
Oh, I mean, it's anything, it aggravates.
The crazy thing to me was, in the course of the phone calls, the tech rep on the other side of the line actually suggested it was the air purifier.
Oh, shameful.
Because they said that the computer, the printers are not shielded against electromagnetic fields. So if they're too close to another electronic device, that can cause them to die.
And you said, "What kind of BS is that?"
I was like, "Well, that's interesting."
The word Malaki comes to mind.
Yeah, and it was, it's one of those things that it was tough because it was working and then it stopped working. And, you know, someone from the public was using it when it stopped working. And I have absolutely no idea what happened. So it was one of those things that I literally don't know what happened to cause it to stop working, but it's dead. So temporarily, until the new one comes in, which is supposed to be around September 19th-ish, it has already shipped. It's just gonna take that long to get from their warehouse in, Lord help me, California. I've temporarily pulled the printer out of my office and we now have that set up at the front desk, which was a whole nother thing, which I won't bore you with because that did not go well. But it's working now and that's all you care about. And that is the director's report, says George.
Okay.
Brand update.
The Friends are, in case you couldn't tell from looking around at us, are currently setting up for their next book sale. The preview sale is going to be next, one week from tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 to 8:00.
It's 7:00, 9:07?
Dates.
I believe so.
Today's the first.
No, that's not right.
So it's the night?
Yes, that is correct. So it is the night of the ninth is the preview sale from 6:00 to 8:00. And then the sale itself will run from the 10th through the 17th, I believe. But double-check the bookmark at the front desk to make sure. We're really excited about how this is going to go, considering the amount of money we made off the paperback sale. We'll see how the full super-duper book sale will go. And then the last day of it, they are planning on doing a bag sale for...
What did they do with leftover paperbacks?
Most of them, if they were still in good condition, were retained for the annual sale. Also, some were put out into Discovery Ben. So we'll see. We're still gonna have to wait. Right now, we are planning on taking a look after the book sale, after everything's cleaned out, about maybe changing collectors in terms of the Discovery Ben. We might be going with another company. Discovery, I didn't realize it, is actually a national chain. So they're not really any local interests whatsoever. There's a new company that started up about three years ago that is actually a Massachusetts-based company, which we might switch over to them instead going forward because they actually do pay per pound for books donated. So that might be an additional revenue stream for the Friends.
What's it called, the new company?
I think it's Bay State Books. I'm gonna have to double-check on it.
Yeah, that would be Massachusetts.
And one of the things is we have to wait because they won't pick up books in another company's box.
Right, yeah.
So if we switched over, we'd have to basically have Discovery come, clean the box out one more time, and then have them come and pick up their box and switch over. Yeah, yeah. So we'll see. That's something that we might be pursuing. I know a couple of the libraries that have switched over already. Boston has actually switched over to them for all of their libraries, as well as Plymouth. So I'm gonna get in touch with some of the folk I still know over in Plymouth and see how they're doing for service.
Okay, good. New business, budget.
So I just wanted to give you guys a little update on where the budget is right now in terms of the town side and some of the other monies. The next page you have is what was approved at town meeting and what we spent so far in the year. Some of the lineums we have... Some of the line items we have already spent through. Where you see that professional service line almost really in the middle of the page, that's the money that we use to pay sales.
Okay.
So I was talking with the accounting department about trying to get it changed over to data services because that's more accurate in terms of what it is. But there was a little bit of a concern that it might be a little confusing if you looked at different years' budgets and the names change in terms of trying to track dollar values of how much the town is spending on different places. So I kind of held off on changing anything yet, but we might still look at that going forward. Pretty much everything is in line so far. Some of the dollar values get a little, you know, we spend some things quicker through than others, especially the clerical and the custodial supplies, just because those aren't fully funded throughout the whole year, so it gets spent through more quickly. Especially nowadays, we've amped up cleaning supplies just to try and, you know, cut down on any kind of transmission issues we might have.
George, what do we do with the floors? Do we strip it and wax them?
I don't know if we strip them, but we, Roland does wax them.
He does wax them?
Yeah.
Okay. So I thought it used to be a service came in once in a while.
He does it himself.
Used to be twice a year.
Twice a year. They'd come in and strip it and then put a couple coats of wax on.
That's one of the things that Roland kind of took over and he's able to do it himself. So we have...
He's got a machine?
Yeah, so we haven't had to do it out of house anymore.
And the floors look nice?
They do, they do.
Which, one of the, I should mention that, too. I did have some words with the Friends because one of my plans in the next year, I have a very strong intention and desire to replace the tables with something that's more manageable. One of the issues we do have with the floor is the tables are so heavy, it's almost impossible to move them by yourselves without scuffing up the floor. And...
That is one of the reasons that John did not stay here was the tables.
Yeah, really? I didn't know that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
They have lighter tables down at the COA.
And it's one of those things that I know in the last year since I've been here, I have sciatica and I've tweaked my back twice moving these, trying about doing it by myself.
The BMW switched over to all plastic tables.
On the list.
The Friends are a little concerned because obviously they use these tables for their book sales.
Right.
So there is a concern that the plastic tables won't be strong enough. But I personally am of the opinion that, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to hamstring ourselves 48 weeks out of the year for the sake of four weeks out of the year.
The eight foot tables I agree with because of span, they bow. The six foot tables are no problem.
Yep, and that's my feeling, too.
We switched to the plastic from these monsters in Rehoboth. We did the six foot.
Yep. The eight foot, there's just so much space, they bow.
Yeah, in my personal experience, we had the eight footers in Wareham and they worked. So it's one of those things that the plastic, the rigid plastic they have nowadays is strong enough that they can take the weight. So that's something that I feel very strongly about, especially considering right now, anytime any outside group uses the room, library staff has to set the room up for them because of the weight of the tables, especially...
They drag them across the floor.
Yeah, or some of them, especially some of the, some of the groups we have are a folk who are...
Older?
I mean, yeah, I was trying to think of a nice way of saying it.
Just say it.
And literally can't move the tables.
Right.
So it's something...
Are these wooden tables?
Oh, these things.
The metal?
This is like a press, but these are heavy.
Oh, okay.
And they're awkward and the distribution of the weight. So in the next year, that's definitely something that's on my...
The plastic tables, one person could handle easily.
And especially because, yeah, well, the other thing, too, is if we get plastic tables, I would also recommend that we get like a cart, carry, cart system so that you can move them en masse, as it were.
How many chairs do you have in here?
I don't know. I think we have enough seating for 100, 150, something like that.
Because the chairs has a rack also.
They do.
It's easy to move it around. It's on wheels. You push it down, you take off, just push it around.
Yeah, the big problem we've always had, obviously, is stored space.
Yes.
So in the past, you know, but I have a plan to try and clean that closet out so we have more room in there than we currently do.
They pursue it.
Thank you.
Would we sell these things?
I don't know. That's one of the things where...
Town property has to be offered to other departments in the town.
Which have to pursue that first and then...
There's a time, there's a time during the year when they have, ask if anybody has stuff they're not using.
Yeah.
That closet, we had constructed because there was no place to put anything.
Yeah.
And I can imagine how closets get full.
It looks like it's an after the fact.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah, well, I mean, the one on the left, not the one on the right.
Oh, I'm talking about the one on the right.
Oh, yeah, no, the one on the right, it, well, they're awful.
Oh, the tables do go in the one on the left, yeah.
But there's so much stuff in there that we couldn't really fit one of the rolly.
Because you could put almost all those tables right against that wall.
Yeah.
Plastic was all racked.
Yeah.
Have you gotten any of the new furniture that you had pictures of?
The storage bins have come in, so that one's already in and set up. So if you'd like to take a look at it, it's right across from Linda's desk in the meeting room, in the children's room. The rest of it is all...
That round thing?
No, those will be coming later. Those take longer.
Yeah, those would sound interesting.
The one that really made me laugh is the picnic tables are, the picnic table is currently scheduled for delivery in December.
It'll be fine outside.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
We started it early.
Yeah, no, it's cool. But yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update on where everything sits with the budget and what the budget numbers are, at least on the town side. The next page, this is my back of the envelope calculations for our material budget. So this is the monies that we have to spend to maintain our certification with Boston. In the middle of the page where you see that M A R, that's our material... Oh dang.
M A R.
M A R. That's the amount of money we have to spend to maintain our certification according to Boston, which is 15% of our total municipal budget, municipal appropriation requirement. That's what it is. On this page right here, this number.
Okay. Oh, all right.
M A R.
M A R. So that's the minimum amount of money that we have to spend for Boston to not... Basically, that's the minimum amount of money we have to spend to get the full amount of state aid money from Boston.
Right.
We could technically spend 1% less than that, but then we'd lose 10% of state aid money. So eh, I did the math and basically we get an extra 10 grand for an extra two grand of spending. So the math works out as far as I'm concerned. And if you, so above here, you see all the different pots of money that we use to buy books from. The first three are what we refer to as the state aid money. So non-resident circ offset, equalization and municipal, those are the three streams from state aid, which we can all go over that at some point if you'd like. After that, we get into some of the trusts and then also our general donation accounts as well as our revolving fund, which is the money we get from fines and fees that we collect.
Where's the revolving?
Revolving, right now, it's zeroed out because we aren't spending any money from the revolving fund on books. We've been using it for custodial and office supplies mostly to date. But if we need to, we could use it for books as well. One of my plans this year is I'm going to work with the town administrator. Currently, we have approval to spend $3,000 from the revolving fund a year. I'm going to see if we can raise that to either 6,000 or 10,000. There isn't that much money there to actually spend yet, but we're trying to grow that so that there could be more there.
Are you saying that we have to spend this?
Yes.
And all of our available money is that?
No. So this is my budget. So what I'm planning on spending is $31,347 and 17 for books. And then if you see down at the bottom of the page, there's reserves. Those are other expenditures for things other than books. So ancestry.com, the database, that counts as a material expenditure. Hoopla, that's one of the other digital services we subscribe to. All of our periodicals. Right now, we're actually spending $5,200 a year-ish on periodicals. I'd like to get that down to 5,000. But basically, I'm using this year to kind of track what gets used now that we're back to full service, seeing what people want to check out and what gets used. Tumble Books is on the chopping block this year. That's a digital service that is for kids' books. It was the first one and for a very long time, it was the only one that did kids' books. But nowadays, Overdrive, Libby and Hoopla all have kids' books as well, so it's really eating their lunch.
They also have it through the schools.
They do, that is true. But it's one of those things that when, for example, when COVID first hit, Tumble Books' circulation spiked and we literally had about 1,000 books checked out in that first month of COVID. Last month in August, we literally had six.
Yeah.
So Tumble Books is a database, so we pay that fee, which is $479.40. And that's regardless of how many people check out anything from it from the year. So if we can get more people to use it, it would make the cost more justifiable. But as of right now, if the current usage stays where it is, we probably won't renew it for next year.
Are kids' books available from the other ones?
Yes. And that was the thing. So it was the first provider of children's books in the E format. But nowadays, Libby and Hoopla both offer honestly better titles.
And Overdrive does not? Is it just a...
Overdrive is Libby.
Overdrive is Libby?
Yep, they're the same company, it's just two different apps.
I will say that during the pandemic, when children were doing remote learning, they became aware of many more books being available online.
Oh, yeah.
And that has made a big difference.
It has, definitely. And it's one of those things like Tumble Books is, it's a good service, but once you kind of go through it, the titles that they have in it aren't as popular or in demand as the other services can provide. So it kind of falls off quickly because of that. And the kids just, you know, it's one of those things to make them read it, but they don't want to read a lot of the titles in there. We've been doing a lot to trying to promote it. We have signs up in the library. We've been featuring it on the website. We had it featured in the Friends newsletter and it hasn't really moved the needle any. So this will probably be the last year unless something dramatically turns around.
And I will say with the remote learning, the kids start to learn authors.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And that, that was pretty fascinating for kids of first or second grade.
That's true. So all of that is to say, so if you take the total here and then you take the reserves and you add them together, you actually get about 44.3 total, which...
Where does Canopy fit in?
Canopy, Canopy is a little bit of an interesting topic, which we can talk about when we get to the digital. But basically, right now, we've only spent about 300 of the dollars that we spent on Canopy, so there's enough in that account. I don't anticipate us having to spend anything more on Canopy for the rest of this year, unless it has a very, very high increase in usage, which it might, but as of right now, I'm not anticipating it.
We should probably start moving this along, getting late.
On the next page, I just wanted to give you an idea of what we took in in fines and fees in FY '22. If you ever were interested in seeing a more detailed breakdown by month, I have it in my office. Feel free to ask. Basically, on the left-hand side, you can see what we took in each month in total. And then on the right-hand side is a overall total by category. So the ways that we took direct money in are in fines, which is overdue fines. And also, we separated out lost, so that's how much money people paid to replace books that were either damaged or lost. Printing and copying is exactly what it sounds like. That's how much money we took in from printing or copying fees.
What did your new printer cost?
The new printer? I think it was $550. So it basically paid for itself.
More than paid for, yeah.
Yeah, it might have been 600. I can't remember off the top of my head. And then also faxing. So faxing was something that we weren't actually charging for or offering as a service before I started. So it was really interesting. Last month, last month alone, we actually just took in $55, I think, in faxing. So it's something that it's a useful service to the community because it gives them a place to go where they can get faxing services.
I don't think there is anything else in town, is there?
No, the next closest thing, I believe, is the UPS store.
Right, on Route 6.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what they charge per page. Other than that, they have to go over to Staples in Fall River.
Do you receive for patrons or just send for them?
We've never had anyone ask us to receive. So it would be...
Is there a fee for faxing?
It's a dollar per page. Yeah, so that's 116 pages sent. And then scanning, it's not really getting too much use. We might, I don't know, we'll see. A lot of libraries offer that as a free service, open to the public. We haven't had too much demand for it, so we might too, I'm not sure. But total last year, between all those different streams, we took in directly $2,186.29.
That's a nice little source of income.
Yep. And then the final thing, just in the course of the director's evaluation, there were some requests to see some of the different data on the digital services, how much they cost and how much they're actually getting used. So looking back at FY '22, which ran from last July until this past June, these are the one, two, three, four different digital services that we subscribe to, how much we pay for them per year and basically what it breaks down per checkout per that cost. I have to give one caveat, though. This $1,177 that we paid last year for Libby and Overdrive together, one, that is underwritten by the Board of Library Commissioners. They give money to sales to help lower that cost for us. And then two, just so you all know, this year that went up by about $1,100. So this year, we had to pay about $2,100, $2,200 for Overdrive. So that number will be higher next year.
Are more people using digital books than hard copies?
Not more than, but more than they used to. So it's one of those things that more people are still checking out print books, but it definitely is shifting towards more people are using both. And then we do have a bunch of folk who only use digital and they never actually come to the library, which I am happy about because otherwise we wouldn't get them using the library at all. So it's interesting to see how it develops and it definitely seems to be shaking out to be a both and as opposed to either or for most people.
And is there a demographic? Is it mostly younger people doing it or...
It depends. I mean, it's easier, my personal anecdotal perception is that people under, you know, under 55, under 60 had an easier time trying it and getting into it. We're seeing a lot more people who are north of 50, starting to really appreciate a lot of the features that eBooks offer. Like, for example, with an eBook, you can on the fly change the size of your type. You don't have to get large print because you can make it large print. And a lot of folks are actually appreciating that. But it depends. I know with me, I do a lot of audiobooks driving back and forth to work. And with digital audiobooks, it gives me a lot more of a selection than just what we have on the shelf. So I look at it more of augmenting our collection and giving us access to a lot more resources than we would have even room to fit on the shelves.
I like Bob Seger's song, "Turn the Page." I like the "Turn the Page."
There you go. See, that's the thing, like me personally, I don't get the same sense of accomplishment from reading an eBook than I do reading a book because you can't really see the, you know, bookmark progressing through the book. You don't, it's not the same exact thing. But, you know, for some folk, that's the only way that they'll read.
When I tried eBooks, the things I hated about them was that after two weeks, they disappeared. And with a hard copy book, you can keep it even though it's overdue or you get it extended.
Not a good thing. So with eBooks, it depends on where you check it out from, but you do have the option to check them out for three weeks instead of just two weeks with an eBook.
Can you renew it?
Some books. It depends on whether or not there's a waiting list. So they still have those functionalities in there. Some people like them because it actually gives you more choice because you can choose to check out a book for seven, 14, or 21 days yourself in Libby. So it doesn't have to be just one preset. Depends on you and how fast you can read a book. But that being said, so basically with Hoopla, we used it for about $3,838 for 19, 19 checkouts, which I thought was a nice round number. I liked that. But it works out to being $2 per checkout. Canopy was $1.41 per checkout. Libby was 6 cents per checkout. And Tumble Books was the most expensive at $4.34 per checkout. Compared that to the average cost of a book, in terms of what the library board of commissioners considers is approximately $10, and we don't know that that book will be checked out. It might be checked out. It might sit on a shelf. It might wait years before someone takes it home for the first time, let alone repeatedly. So with that, every single one of those checkouts is a literal checkout that we know was a use. So I think that digital services do have a very good return in terms of the amount of money we spend, in terms of knowing that it actually is being utilized.
It's going to be more the way of the future.
Yeah. So I wanted to share all that with all of you folks.
Moving on. Old business. Mr. George.
Yep. So in case you didn't see, the fence is up. It's completed. And we paid it in the last round of bills. So big clap for everybody for getting that across the finish line.
It looks great.
It does. We are still working on the bench situation, trying to get in touch with somebody at Diamond or one of the other schools. Roland did have an idea about approaching the high school because last year, there was a boat building class, whether or not they'd be interested in playing with teak on wood with us. We'll see. So I'm going to try and get in touch with the teacher of that class.
They have a lot of suckers up there?
I mean, I wasn't going to put it that way, Carol, but we'll see. But between Diamond and Brisk Delagie, I think there should be, you know, one of the classes at one of the schools should be interested.
We had a painter come out and look at it, and he sounded interested but maybe a little skeptical. And then he called back and said he didn't have time.
Yeah.
Westport Fisherman's Association builds a boat every kayak or canoe. And this group of people, Howard Giffitt's one of them. And I wonder if they would do it for us as a community service thing.
Do you know them?
Kind of.
You want to ask them?
I mean, no harm.
Do you want to do it?
No harm in calling to us.
If you want to.
They have all aged.
We could move it for them.
Yeah, either way, or Brisk, I mean, Diamond has a work order I can submit and ask them to have, you know, the, you know, kids work on it as a class project.
We have a Diamond rep in Westport. Jennings.
Yes.
How about?
What's a work order? You have to fill out, right?
Yeah. But I mean, there's another.
But if we would let him know what the situation is and that it's holding up this community.
Probably.
Yeah, he could push it through. Do you know Mr. Jennings?
No, but I wouldn't, wouldn't be opposed to calling him. I mean, that's a community service.
And we're municipal department, so that really kind of greets us.
And I don't know how many names. I mean, Diamond has been helpful to us in the past.
Town Hall, Town Hall, we had a.
And it's funny, when the kids, we had kids, two groups of kids that came to do something for us. And we threw a pizza party for each of them on their last day. They were overwhelmed. Nobody's done this for us before. And it wasn't any big deal, but it was just, they come with a bus and do the job and then...
They go back to school.
Yeah.
That's one of the things, like, considering the size of the project, I think, you know, a whole class might definitely be, you know, a good idea.
Yeah, might, the, you know, exuberance of everybody being together.
I definitely would love to, you know, we do a lot of outreach to, you know, Westport High and to the middle school. You know, I'd love to be able to, you know, get better traction with the Westport kids that go to the out-of-town schools, too. You know, I don't want them to feel like we just ignore them just because that school's right there.
Do you want me to call a boat building teacher at Westport first?
I don't know. Because, I mean, it's a, it's one class as opposed to like, you know, the carpentry students, you know?
Well, but, but it's one class.
Next door. Yeah.
Yeah. And Mr. Orban had mentioned, Superintendent Orban had mentioned that he'd like to work with the library.
Yeah. And that's the thing. So I don't know. One way or the other, which way would be better to go.
It has to be done very carefully because the two we did came out so-so. His stuff was so lickly, it ran all over the place. I know they went out and sanded them trying to get them to look better. But the painter that was here, he, the suggestion he had was just spray them with Thompson Water Seal. You know, just spray them. If you have to spray them every year, it takes you an hour. But we've got two that are stained and the rest are not.
Yeah.
If you could put one of those at each end and then have the unstained in the middle.
Yeah, right for that.
You could do that.
Because they are going to weather anyway.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that would be an inexpensive way to do it, and it wouldn't take a lot of time.
Yeah, that could be.
I mean, you're gonna, it's going to weather, so they'll weather the gray look, and the other two will weather a little differently.
Yeah, and if you put them on each end, it would, yeah.
It'll look like they're playing.
It was a thought that the painter had.
Look like, yeah. Books with bookends.
And I would assume that he would know.
He seems pretty knowledgeable.
This is what I would do.
Yeah.
Because it's labor-intensive.
Yeah.
And if you're going to have to do this every so often.
It's terrible.
In hindsight, we should have put something there that's less maintenance, but.
Yeah.
So what do, so what do we want to do?
You want to look into somebody from Diamond?
To do the oil or?
Do we just switch them around and just put one on either end and just let them go?
I would make a recommendation. We put one on either end and let's spray them and let them weather.
I second that.
I'll spray them. It is not going to, you should just use a bug spray or something. You just spray them.
You know, pretty soon, it's going to be too cold to do it.
Right. Yeah.
And, you know, so we might as well just set it up so that it's like, you know, putting them on each end and then let them weather. Otherwise, we're going to have a mess on our hands. At least that's a doable way.
I'll spray them if Roland can help me get them in position.
I can help you do them. That's not a problem.
We'll flip them over.
Oh, you with the back. Yeah. Yeah.
It's not yadda, it's not actually a bad bag. As long as they don't twist, it shouldn't be a problem.
I think Sean would be willing to help you.
Because if we flip them over, we do it the whole underside of them.
Yeah.
And then put them back over, then do the whole oversight. It probably wouldn't take more than half, 45 minutes an hour to do them all.
Right.
Yeah.
I just got to clean my bug spray. I had Roundup in it, so.
And Sean has a sprayer. I'm sorry.
When I was out there today, I noticed that there's a fairly good-sized dead limb that's hanging down.
I don't know what to bring up after.
Is it possible to get the janitor to do anything?
We have a request in to the Highway Department. I just don't know how long it's going to take for them to get to it.
What's the request for? To cut down that big branch and the dead ones or just the dead ones?
Well, I, I've talked to them about the dead ones. I didn't talk to them about the big branch, so I don't know about that.
Roland brought it up.
Yeah, Roland told me about it.
And it, it does look lopsided with that thing there because it was probably okay before they cut down the other branches when they did it at school. And they wanted to leave the big branch, but it looks lopsided.
Yeah.
He's concerned that if Roland said if something happens to it, it falls on somebody.
Yep.
Yeah. That's true. Yeah, so, okay.
If it was a potential danger, maybe the Highway Department would respond or.
Chris will, I've already talked to Chris.
They're really good.
I'm happy to something else.
Yeah. It's just tough because they're, you know, they're very short staff.
Should we spray the units?
Yep.
He said Thompson Water Seal is the best.
Yeah.
So we would have to pick that up.
Yeah.
Second.
I'd go with that.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll set up a date, Polly, and let me know if it works for your husband?
Yeah, let me know when.
And we've got an account at A, so we can just get it down there.
Okay. Oh, what else you got, George? Statue value assessment?
So the statue value assessment got postponed just because of everything else. In the last month, we didn't have time to get around to that. So hopefully, this month, we'll be able to.
If not, we can move it down below because you've got things going on.
Yeah. And then digital service, we already did that.
I make a motion. We move statue value assessment table, put it in the, down below the list that we carry over from month to month.
I second it.
Very good.
Favor? Aye, aye, aye.
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 George, last one. Digital services, usage and cost.
We already did it.
We already did it.
Yep. Just got lumped in over the end with the other reviews.
Other things, I want to follow up with some things that we talked about from the last meeting. I contacted Betty Slade and Martin Costa about ADA ramp for out back. Betty got back to me today. I haven't heard from Martin yet. And Betty's was, my first response would be that it is not eligible, that neither the building or is on, either the building is on historic inventory. It is not outdoor recreation. CBA funds cannot be used for sidewalks, meeting ADA standards for historical projects and outdoor recreation projects themselves do qualify. I'm going to ask her more about that because that is recreation for kids.
Yes.
I did tell her that, but I'll ask her again.
They probably won't consider it because they usually require it to be active and not passive.
Okay.
And she also said, this might be a good project for the Manton Foundation. Would we be okay asking them if we already have money?
Well, we don't have money. We really don't have a new project at this time. And that would be, it would not be an expensive project in comparison to others.
So we use the, try to look at getting the cost of using the Manton Foundation money we have?
Well, no, I would say we might approach them to do that. They have their name on this room. We could also put a name on a garden path. Or we had, there might be some people who were interested in benches who might be interested in a garden path.
Why don't I get some estimates? And then we can see which direction you want to go.
And I have someone who knows someone who was interested.
The design part is going to be the hard part in terms of laying that out.
And Joseph knew someone who was interested in donating to the amphitheater, donating benches. So might, those people might be interested.
Let me get some prices so we get an idea what we can ask for.
If you wanted to take a drive down, they, during COVID, they redid the front of the Marion, the Elizabeth Taylor Library in Marion. And they put in a handicapped ramp on the front of the building, which looks really nice. And they actually integrated a whole garden thing. So if anybody is down that way, it's just taking a look at it. I know the director down there, if we wanted to, we could approach the designers of that.
Could you contact and ask him who it is?
Yeah. But it's, I was down there for a program because they used, they actually did a whole patio and a ramp and front stairs and the whole nine yards.
I think we're talking two different things, really. We're talking an ADA walkway.
Yeah.
And then garden, you dress it up.
Well, I know, but in terms of like, just the, the walkway tying it into the benches and everything, you know, looking at it as one project altogether.
Yeah, the garden's already there with the benches.
And I would recommend we take it from this door.
Yeah.
Down and join it from the parking lot so the two join together and go down. So if you're here, you can go down the ADA walkway, or if you're in a parking lot, you can go down that. So you don't have to come into the library to do it.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Meanwhile, I'll send out a Fila.
All right. And I'll get some estimates on just the basic design of it, then we can tweak it after.
Definitely.
Where will you get the estimates?
I will.
But where will you get them?
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay. Because I was thinking of Sarah Lavalley in town who does garden design. I don't know if she'd be appropriate or not.
She ADA, know how to do ADA stuff.
I don't know what ADA is.
American Disabilities Act?
No.
It's the walkways have to be a certain.
We have Elaine Ostroff's book. Elaine Ostroff wrote a tome on disabilities and how to handle them. And she donated a copy to the library. It's here. I wonder if there are ideas in there.
Can you find the book?
I might be. I can find a book.
All right. That's a start.
I think they still have it.
Well, would.
Oh, you must because, excuse me, it's not that old.
No. I remember, I think somebody asked for it. We did still have it on the shelf.
It would be within the past 15 years. I don't think a Westport author, someone would have gotten rid of it.
And I had asked Martin also if he had any ideas on where we might get grants or something for it because he's involved in all the ADA.
Right.
But he hasn't got back to me yet.
This is Martin Costa.
Yeah.
Oh. One of the times Jim came out, I was talking with him about it. And, you know, he used to do ADA. And from what he said, from what he remembered, he suggested having it on the south side of the tree. You know, we're looking at the north versus the south side of where to actually have the, the path start. And he thought it would make more sense to have it on this side of the tree.
Closer to the library.
Closer to the library as opposed to the far side.
We originally thought, you know, tennis courts.
But from him looking at it, he was like, it's been a long time since he did ADA. But that's what he felt, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
The other thing was brought up was the, trying to get the water hook up for down here.
Yeah.
I thought it'd be pretty simple. We had Bill, the electrician, come out, putting in a plug and, or a switch. And he can't really do that because you have to have a tank, just like a well. You have to have a tank, pressure tank. So we talked about, and I talked to Chris afterwards, he said, you, I could dig a hole down there deep enough that you could put the pressure tank in a cement, a hole.
Yeah.
Big enough that you can go down into it so it wouldn't freeze and you wouldn't have to drain it. So he's got an idea. I'm still working on it. So we're trying to tweak it. That's his idea. If you dig a big hole, like a manhole, so big around, you put the pressure tank down there with the pressure switch, I mean, the tank with the pressure switch down there. And just remember to turn it off up here when you're done. You still turn it off with a switch up here to turn it off so nobody can use it unless the switch in there is turned on. So that's the thought. Now I got to get ahold of Bob Butler, have him take a look at it, and we get his recommendations. And Chris said he'll do all the work.
Bob Butler and niece. And niece.
I think the niece is doing most of the work.
She's doing most of the work. She just put a holding system in our house.
Okay?
Yeah. Yeah. She's awesome. Yeah, they were really good.
And we could talk to Chris again about that big branch. He could cut that down and do the little ones. Because you need a bucket for the other ones, right?
And that was the thing. Roland says that he, as long as he has the bucket, he could do the rest of it himself, but.
Yeah.
I don't think that was a good idea.
I think, because Chris wouldn't, Chris wouldn't let Roland.
No.
In his bucket.
Yeah, no.
That'd be against the rules. I talked to Jim also about updates on ASBILTS. There's no updates on ASBILTS or what they're going to do with the grass or anything yet. No updates for the school from the ASBILTS. It's a year after the project's over. That's just stuff that was from last week's, last month's meeting. Anybody else, any other things?
May it be a turn?
Second. Oh, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.